Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. All right, we're gonna get started again. So, under public hearings and presentations to and by the board. Okay. Questions from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any question previously discussed through administrative channels and not on the agenda will be granted five minutes to make a presentation to the board. You'll have to state your name for the record. Is everyone that is here, does anyone like to, would like to speak regarding anything on our agenda? If so, could you raise your hand, just so I know how many? Okay, all right, so. Hold on.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead. We will need you to please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Philip Lohman. I will be running for our House of Representatives as of next year, and...
And what do you wish to speak on our agenda?
I wish to speak basically about the mask mandate that I hear is on the agenda. I am against the mask mandate, but I do believe in precautions. I express people's right to free will and their choice. Nice. Whatever they decide is up to them. That's all I wish to say.
Right, thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, you can come forward, please. And if you could please state what you're going to be speaking about, your name for the record, and if you live in the Rolla 31 School District.
Mr. Lohman, do you live in the Rolla School District?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Karen Harris, and I want to speak to you this evening regarding the return to learn program for our plan, rather, for the fall of this year. And yes, I have a student in the Rolla 31 School District.
Okay, you'll be given five minutes.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you, first of all, for allowing me to once again come before the board and speak. I do appreciate this opportunity. And I would like to go back to when I first approached the board in October of 2020, October 1st, exactly. I stood before the board and I pleaded with you not to send our high schoolers hybrid. I pointed out the increase at that time in mental health, excuse me, mental health issues among teens and the increase in substance abuse that we had been seeing within the community. I was told that part of the justification for the change to hybrid was to slow community spread and to protect vulnerable family members, which is understandable. I'm sure there were more reasons and that the board was attempting to act in the best interest of the school and community, but I also feel that we can safely say that the experiment failed. Community transmission increased from October of 20 to January of 21. It didn't do anything to slow that, and despite the hybrid schedule. In addition, students in general lost much ground academically, not only here but nationwide. That's a proven fact, I'm sure you're all aware of. And I'm grateful that we abandoned the plan and didn't have to re-implement it, so I do appreciate that. I'm also encouraged that this summer we were able to make masks optional with great success. I'm optimistic we can continue the same success this fall. Vaccines are now readily available to anyone that wants one. There is no reason for any high school student, teacher, or staff member or their families not to receive the vaccine if they choose to do so. This eliminates the largest reason I was given for most of our mitigation measures last year. As far as junior high students and younger that aren't eligible for the vaccine, they largely recover well from COVID. Of course, I'm sensitive to the fact there will be outliers, but for the most part, they recover well and are not responsible for transmission to teachers. If cases do increase in the fall, as they are likely to do, I think we can see the writing on the wall there, I hope we really consider the impact our decisions have on the students. Again, they're not the primary vectors of the virus. According to the CDC, the evidence to date suggests that staff-to-student and student-to-student transmission are not the primary means of exposure to SARS-CoV-2 among infected children. The CDC goes on to say, "Several studies have concluded that students are not the primary sources of exposure to SARS-CoV-2 among adults in school settings." In addition, according to the latest numbers from Phelps Health, the average number of hospitalized COVID patients right now is 66. Advanced age is the primary comorbidity with this disease. I would encourage school board members before any decisions are made regarding mandatory masking to shadow the classrooms and see the struggles teachers have with implementing the mandates. What kind of teacher wants to spend their days serving as the mask police? My own daughter was threatened with suspension for being caught one time with her mask down to get a drink of water. Is this really the kind of learning environment we want for our children? I don't think so. According to an article published this July, July the 15th, by KMOV, Missouri is facing a behavioral health crisis among our youth. We are hearing that hospitals are overrun by COVID patients, but did you know that according to this article, behavioral health units are being overrun as well? According to Trish Lolo, President of St. Louis Children's Hospital, "While COVID-19 wasn't the issue per se, it was everything we did to control the spread of the virus that we believe will have long-lasting effects and ultimately affect their mental health in the future." She went on to say, "There has been a 30% increase in kids showing up to the emergency room at St. Louis Children's Hospital now compared to pre-pandemic." Of course, that's July of this year, so just recently. Again, I'm grateful that our school reversed course when it did. I'm fully aware that some schools didn't open at all, which was even more tragic. I hope we can learn from our failed mitigation strategies from last fall, mainly that children are not the primary vectors of COVID and should be allowed to more or less live their lives as normal. We, as a community, need to focus on mitigation strategies that have been proven effective: washing hands, staying home when sick, and proper nutrition. And stop placing this burden on the backs of our children. It is not theirs to bear. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Come forward, please. Which item would you like to speak about on our agenda?
I'd like to speak about the return to learning slash mask mandate portion.
Okay, could you state your name for the record, please?
I am Robert Miller. I'm a, I'm within the Rolla Public Schools District.
Okay, great, you'll get five minutes. Thank you.
And I'd just like to start out that I will be running for Rolla City Council in this next year. And what brings me here tonight is the potential mask mandate or revisiting of the mask policy. And it seems that we've had this back-and-forth conversation about masks and vaccines over the last 16 months, and we have to figure out for ourselves, when does the freedom of choice, you know, get expressed with the parents in our school district? And how can they affect the outcome of, you know, this pandemic and with our children's learning? But the biggest thing of it is, is there was a study by John Hopkins that the respiratory rate of children is higher than adults than it is with children when they get excited or fidgety, that their respiratory and heart rate can increase, putting them at greater risk for CO2 inhalation and potential cognitive impairment. And that does significantly impact a child's ability to learn, especially elementary school age. And I know that we've had it throughout the community and throughout Phelps County about, like, this last mask mandate that we had, and, you know, it's, it's torn a lot of people apart as far as whether they're for or against mask wearing. But it's the recommendation that, you know, have the parents decide, you know, what's best, and, and it's like what the previous speaker said about a threat with suspension, that's, that's really, really overkill as far as the, just taking a drink of water. I mean, everybody has to drink, they have to have food, you know, to some degree to maintain nutrition. But we're having to think about, where does this masturbate have to end? You know, we have thousands of new cases with the Delta variant, but at the end of the day, you know, it's, it should be about freedom of choice, not inhibiting that ability to choose also for ourselves. But if we overstep our bounds and we're, you know, getting into the realm of, well, we have to do this, but we can't do that, you know, that's where the disciplinary part comes in, but we shouldn't, you know, threaten to discipline somebody else because they made a choice. But we do have the vaccine available, and I've heard great things about it, heard not-so-great things about it. But there's also been cases to where, and I'm pretty sure that you guys may have heard about it, about deaths resulting from the vaccine and even people contracting COVID from getting the vaccine because it hadn't taken effect yet, not enough times passed, whatever the case may be. But there again, the vaccine, I'm just hoping that with these masks, there's not a mandatory vaccine to make this a policy within our school district also. So I know we have, even when I was in school, I attended Licking School back in the late 90s throughout the 2000s, we had a certain number of vaccines that were required as per the childhood immunization, but now if we mandate COVID vaccines, there again, where do we get into that, that choice? So I thought I'd reach out to you guys and, and, you know, share that along and hope you guys will, you know, make masks optional for parents and hope to continue that conversation, and hopefully the vaccine is made optional also. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have anybody else before we move forward? Okay. So since the majority of you are here because of the return to learn plan...
We're assuming.
We're assuming that.
We're assuming that most of the crowd is here because of the return to learn plan. It is at the very end of the agenda of a quite long meeting. We would like to move it up till now. You're certainly welcome to stay for the entire meeting, we invite you to do so, but in the interest, out of respect for your time, we figure we might as well do it now if that's okay. So, we'll be moving down to full business, Item C for the Rolla 31.
Okay, first of all, introduce a new name, Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Service Plan, abbreviated R-SRCSP. I want to make sure that is not our attempt to overword this. This is actually the official name that comes tied to the SR3 Plan, Federal Plan, tied to the SR3 funds that we received as a district. So, if you go to other school district sites now, you'll see this term being used. It's not our preferred term, but we thought we might as well just call it what it is. So, if you start seeing the acronym SRCSP, we'll try to call that out each time. I'll probably slip and call it a return to learn plan or Rolla 31 Learning Plan or something along the way. But just so you know, that's the acronym and title that we will be using, so. So obviously with this plan, just trying to sum up what we're trying to do, is we are trying to provide a safe environment for students and staff. We are trying to provide for the physical, social, emotional, and mental health of our students. We are trying to put in mitigations that reduce risk and make us responsive to conditions within the community. We want to put a plan in place that provides for academic progress for our students and high-quality educational experience. You will see that the guidelines necessarily look different from the elementary up to the high school, so that they are age-appropriate and fit the instructional programs for the building. And obviously, the goal, just as it was last year, is to stay open for the full year, get a full year of instruction, and have all of our students experience a 2021, 2022 school year. Now, you should have in your packets a draft form of this plan. So we have Gina here, Dr. Dare, Dr. Williams, that can take notes and make changes. I will be asking you to approve this plan at the end of the presentation. So if there are edits as we go along, the plan is laid out with the same headings that I'll be presented on tonight, so the sections flow the same way, the language is the same. But certainly along the way, if there are edits, revisions, changes, if you'd like to stop and talk about certain sections, then we can certainly do that. But this is in draft form. Once it is finished, and if, if we receive approval tonight, I assume we'll come out of here with an approved plan, we will share that with the public, we'll put it on our website, and we'll push it out to our district parents tonight along with a letter describing some of the components of the plan. Okay? So I put this up here, supporting guidance. I don't want to go through each one of these. The, the, really, the message is that we're looking at a lot of different resources, and there are times that resources conflict with each other, which makes it a little bit difficult. But as we move through here, I will tell you, we have been promised guidance from DESI and the Department of Health and Senior Services, was, the message is it will be out sometime this week. Well, now we're down to Thursday, so I'm assuming that may come tomorrow. So I want to say that, I don't know a different way to say this, is that this plan that I'm presenting tonight is current, and it is our recommendation as of this moment, as I stand here and speak to you tonight. If we get guidance from the state level, from the Department of Education or from the Department of Health and Senior Services that run contrary to our plan, we will have to revisit it. But as we stand here right now, this is the plan that we'll be recommending to you. So, we know we're in a fluid situation. So first of all, the two learning modes that we are proposing for this school year is obviously fully seated classes. And those items on the left are really the items that we're going to be talking about tonight with our safe return plan. So I won't go through each one of those, we will cover each one of those throughout the plan. But this is the only point that we discuss, the online classes that we will have available for parents and students to choose. We will have fully online options. I want to say, that's not, that's not a COVID reaction thing. The COVID reaction part is that we have more people signing up for that. Fully online classes have been available for many years through the state's mocap program. Because of the demand, we are also offering some, some additional local options, but the state options remain there as well as they have for many years. They're fully accountable courses, by that I mean that the grades will be transcribed to the students' permanent records. They are aligned with the Missouri learning standards, and everything is approved by the state. State provisions also apply. We will have local offerings of programs that we have, but parents and students are also free to go to the DESI mocap website, research those providers, and if they find a provider there they prefer, then we will work with that provider as well. So there are several options. Come with teacher support and contact. Last year, we made the decision to offer fully online students Misha eligibility. In other words, they can participate in sports and activities. I would recommend that we continue to do that because they are fully enrolled. Sign-up, we are planning to begin August 1st, and we will push out some more information prior to that so that parents can research that choice. And obviously, devices are available for our students as needed. Okay? We are not planning on making the, there is no hybrid option this year, and I won't go into detail, but I would maybe disagree with Mrs. Harris's conclusion some, but that's a story for another day. But we are not planning on, the hybrid is not an option that we're putting on the table and putting in our plan for this year. We are going seated classes, online classes. We are confident we can do that. If something happens that we have to move to remote, that's a very remote idea because of the availability of vaccines, as mentioned, and everything else. But those are our two options. The hybrid plan is not on the table for this year. Okay. The elements of the Safe Return and Continuity of Services Plan are listed on the screen here for you. These are the items that I'm going to outline here on the next few slides. These will be the headings on each of the next few slides. As you look down through there, there are some, probably some that gather a little more attention than others. We will spend a little longer on some than others because some are more nuanced than others and take a little more time. But these are the required elements of our plan, and you'll see that we try to address these in one way or another throughout the entire plan. So, first of all, for masking and PPE, we did move to a voluntary masking policy for summer school. As I stand here today, right now, my recommendation is that we continue with that policy for the upcoming school year throughout all of our buildings. That would include the time of entering and leaving the buildings and while they are there. So masking would be voluntary. You can choose your verb, there may be times that it is encouraged, promoted, asked for, but we are stopping short right now of being required. Now, I'd like to be able to say that I'm fully confident that that will be the case for the entire school year. That is our intent, that is what we are planning. Between that, we are one month away from school starting. If we receive something different and our plan runs contrary to plans that we feel we should be following, we may need to come back and revisit this. I'm telling you, this is where we are right now. I know that makes no one happy. That doesn't make the people who are wanting masks happy, and it doesn't make the people who are asking for us not to mask happy, not knowing that it is a definitive, this is what we're doing. And I'm telling you, this is where we are right now. This is my recommendation to the board, that we have an optional masking policy similar to what we had during summer school. We did have a very successful summer school. It is smaller class sizes, smaller numbers, and it was prior to this Delta variant taking off. So I don't know that we compare it exactly, but we were successful. We will have disposable masks available as needed for students and visitors. As I said, periodic changes may occur due to changing guidance or community, district conditions. I guess what I would like to say is I would like our standard operating procedure to be optional masks with a potential pivot to required mask if we get to just a emergency situation and we're told we need to do so. But our intent and our hope is an optional mask full year is, is what we're trying for. I will say, there is one problem, and that is transportation. We still have a direct federal order for masking to be worn on all public transportation, and that includes school buses. And that is not a recommendation, that's not, that, that is a, that is a federal order. Now, as part of the DESI and DHSS guidance, we were told earlier this week that there would be some language in that plan that maybe school districts could look at to use to consider changes. I have not seen that language, and I've not seen any language that would change that. So the plan, as we're proposing it tonight, would include masking while on the school buses to and from school. In order to reduce the population on buses, we do ask parents, when possible, to transport their students, and we will distance students on buses to the greatest extent possible. But knowing our bus population, the number of bus routes we use, we would not be able to say that we can socially distance on all buses. Okay? I don't want to move, obviously, this is one of the two or three primary slides of interest. I don't want to move past here without, if there are questions or comments from the board that you'd like me to address.
Can you go back to summer school for a second?
Yep.
Did you say there were no cases?
We had one, we had one that I'm aware of at our elementary.
Okay. Do we have a certain number in mind? Like, if it hits that number, we'll go to masks, or is it fluid?
I don't really want to put a number because there are just so many different factors. I find that by putting a number, sometimes it gives leaders an out to say, that's our number, this is what we're doing. Frankly, I'm not running from the idea that this is a difficult position to be in. We will just have to make a decision and take accountability for making that decision rather than just relying on a number.
Yeah.
I don't, I think that's just where we are.
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay? All right. Fiscal distancing and cohorts. We are going to retain the cohort model that we used at the elementary, elementary and middle school last year, and that is that we will not be mixing classes together for things like lunch, recess. Before school, we used to have common gathering areas where all the students would wait together and sit. We will still have students report to their classroom and try and limit the contact they have to their classroom cohorts. That includes arrival, arrival time, dismissal. We will do everything we can to get kids outside and distance and out in fresh air. Lunch recess, lunch recess specials will all be handled on a cohort model as well. And the idea is to limit the, any contact a student has to a much smaller circle of people. All in an attempt to hopefully, obviously, not spread and, and just limit that possibility. At the junior high, high school, RTI and RTC, they will follow their regular class schedule just as they did last year. Within the classes, we are going to distance them to the greatest extent possible. We think we can get more than three feet, in some classes we can get six, but I, we can't say that in every single class. But we will distance them to the greatest extent possible in classes that we can. Of course, masks are still optional for students who are uncomfortable being so close, and of course, we would respect anyone's decision to wear a mask or decide not to. I meant to mention that on the other one. We're going to respect each person's decision. But that may be something that kids are more comfortable in the larger classes. We would like to reinstitute the volunteers on a, and visitors to classroom who are essential to the educational process on a more limited basis. Spoke with Gina Zervos, the director of our volunteer program, and she will work with volunteers to make sure that they follow guidelines and be able to get into the schools. Right?
So does that mean in places where the kids have more than one teacher, they have a team of teachers? The kids will stay in their classroom?
Yes.
And the teachers will move?
The teachers will move, yes. Uh-huh. At least, when Dr. Davis and I, you're talking about at the middle school, when Dr. Davis and I spoke today, that was the plan. Okay? And I would also say, this plan tonight, just for you guys, this, I'm looking at as kind of the outline and directives for us to then take and operationalize. So things like lunch, recess, we did it one way last year, there's some things that worked, there were some things that we may like to change. So we will take this and then put it into practice within each building.
Okay. I also know that the PTOs, I know they got creative, I think, towards the end of the year, where they hopefully be able to do the same this year.
Yeah, we hope, we hope to allow everything that we can.
Can.
Yeah. Handwashing and respiratory etiquette is a required part there, and so we will make sure that we're instructing kids on healthy habits. We'll have signage up about healthy habits. Particularly at the younger age, we'll make time so that they can take care of those things under a more guided approach. We probably need that at the high school level as well, but that's more difficult to march a high school class to a bathroom than it is an elementary class, so. We will have the teachers instructing and guiding and providing time. And obviously, hand sanitizer is something that seems like a new back-to-school item. Hopefully, it will not be for long, but we will have hand sanitizer available within all the classrooms and most of the exits and entrances as you come in and out of buildings. Under health of facilities, this is cleaning within each building. Obviously, we institute additional cleaning, we'll keep that up this year. We are using approved cleaning products that are rated to help with COVID. Have additional hand sanitizer stations. We've tried to shift custodian schedules around to allow for more cleaning during the school day. And as we've talked with you about, we've already begun looking at HVAC improvements, monitoring indoor air quality in some of our buildings and making those changes as necessary as well. Now, that's, that's not a just quick throw-in-a-new HVAC system, but we have some plans and there are some others that we think we can do something more quickly to help with the indoor air quality within the buildings. Health screening, obviously, it takes all of us kind of working together to make sure that we don't have an issue that gets out of hand, and that is, if you are sick, if you are not feeling well, that you do not come to school if you're a student, or do not come to work if you are an employee. We've always operated under this mantra of come to school no matter what, that shows perseverance and it shows commitment, which all of that is true. But we are simply at a point now that if you are under the weather, our preference is that you stay home. We will get you the instruction, we will get you the homework, but it's better to stay home and be safe and get healthy and then return when you are ready. So we would still ask both employees and parents and students to assess before they come to school, make sure you're not just assuming that what you have is allergies or something else and then it turns into a bad situation. We would ask that you carefully monitor yourself and see a healthcare professional if you're not sure. So nothing has changed as far as that. We still, we will have tests, free tests available to any student or staff. All they have to do is reach out to the nurse. We do not hold those at each building, those are housed over at your community health We do not hold those at each building, those are housed over at your community health center. But we can reach out for you, plan for you to go over there and get free access to a COVID test. Contact tracing and quarantines. I will tell you, we, this is not gone, this is not over. And the idea that we are not a full mask mandate school may take away some of the options we had for shorter quarantines. That is a reality that we live in. We had some allowances for those who are wearing masks to change their quarantine. Those allowances will still be there for those students who elect to wear a mask, but if those who aren't, that takes away that option. So we could see an increase in the number of quarantines and the length of quarantines. We will provide close contact information for in-school contacts. We are not seeking to do contact tracing outside of school or look at their circle of influence outside of school, but as far as close contacts within school, we will monitor that. We will work as closely as we can with the Phelps Mary's Health Department. They are over, a little overwhelmed, I think, right now with the numbers. So we may have to take more of this on than we have in the past. I hope not, but in reality, that may be something that comes to us. So we should, we should be prepared. Fully vaccinated staff and students are currently exempt from quarantine. And I say that not as a matter of influence or anything else, but just as a matter of fact. That is part of the quarantine procedures that are currently in place. Okay? Questions on quarantining? I know this is where typically most of the contact comes and where people get most frustrated. I want to be clear, it is still here. We hope, our goal is to quarantine as few kids as possible. We are not looking to expand the circle of contacts of a positive case out to so far that we have this large number of kids quarantined. We want kids in school, but we have to do our part that if they are true close contacts, we are starting to see this summer some additional spread from close contacts being positive. So that is still a part of our operational plan. Questions, comments on this part? Okay? Vaccinations is a section here. We will provide information to all eligible, parents, staff, students, community members, whoever. We're fortunate to live in a community where finding a vaccine supply is not difficult. They're there every day, and that's not the case in maybe some smaller Missouri communities. But we'll provide information that if anyone is interested where they can get it, that is a personal decision. I would ask, let's acknowledge the debate going on about vaccines with those who are adamant that everyone should get them, those who are adamant that they are not going to, and those who are trying to make up their mind if they're going to or not. If you're one of those who is trying to make up your mind if this is the right choice for you, I would simply urge you to speak with your doctor, your medical provider, your healthcare provider about that decision. And I'll tell you, my wife and I did that very thing. We really thought about what the right thing to do for our family is, talk with our healthcare provider, and we made that decision for our family to be vaccinated. So we are, I'm not telling you what to do, it is a very personal decision. But I would ask you to speak with your doctor about that to help you make your decision. And again, fully vaccinated staff, I put this on, I'm sorry, on two slides here. Fully vaccinated staff and students are currently exempt from quarantine. And I say that again, as a, just a matter of fact, that is part of our school year. Oh, so let me address here. So, you know, we work with the university a lot through this. Their goal is 85% vaccinated for all of their staff and students. That would be, I would be really happy if we could get to 85%. Frankly, it will open up some, it will open up some opportunities for normalcy that I'm afraid we won't have if we don't have higher levels. But 85% is aggressive. We are not collecting vaccination information. There are no requirements to do anything within the school district that you have to prove your vaccination status. We're not asking our staff to provide their vaccination status. But I will say, if, when we have a positive case pop up and we start looking at that contact tracing, I originally felt like that we would not get in the business of having people even self-disclose their vaccination status to us. But I don't know that if we don't, there might not be a delay in them being able to realize their exemption from quarantine. So I'm not saying we will collect it, but I'm also, I can't sit here and say that we won't have to allow them to self-disclose if they're identified as a close contact so that the, so that we can handle the quarantine exemption. We are still working through that with the health department, we are still working through what that will look like. But that is the only scenario that I can foresee where someone would be presenting us with their vaccination status, as if they're willingly, if they're voluntarily doing so because they've been identified as a close contact.
So that won't be on nursing forms or anything like that?
It will not be part of the student registration process, it isn't something we're going to ask during enrollment, it isn't something we're going to ask the first day of school. No, it's, it's not anything that we have on our radar. As we mentioned, we do have a list of required vaccines in order to attend school. That is, I mean, that's always been the case, it's still the case. We do require students to have the required vaccines. Obviously, this is not a required vaccine, and we would not make it a required vaccine unless it becomes statutorily required, just as the others are. We will follow the law when it comes to required vaccines for our students, and that's what we will do.
So kind of back to your scenario where if somebody was in a close contact and you were needing to, or if you decide to ask them if they want to voluntarily give that information, would it then be documented, or would it just be asked every time?
Well, let me jump, first, I don't think we would ask, have you been vaccinated? I think we would simply say, you're a close contact. Here's a quarantine. We, the, what I would foresee if someone said, well, but I've been vaccinated, how do I do that? We say, oh, okay, provide your vaccination status. I don't know what, right now, we don't have a mechanism to collect and store the information. I thought about this earlier today, do we create one? I mean, we certainly can, it's not that complicated. We could certainly do that, or it might be that each time that this happens, that someone would have to show proof of vaccination prior. I don't know which is better, which is worse. We're not storing them as part of their personnel record or anything else. If anything, it would be a separate list that they've self-disclosed this during and earlier, and if it comes up again, then we've already got record of it, that could be. But we haven't gotten that far frankly yet, because we didn't want to be in that business. But it may be necessary to help with the efficiency of the process. Anything else before I move on here? Accommodations, obviously, with any plan, there is no plan that fits the unique needs of every learner. And so we are committed, if there are accommodations that need to be made for individual students or groups, they can visit with our staff and we will do so. Some of the individual groups that we serve in unique ways, English language learners, gifted students, students who receive Title I services, and students who are in special education and 504s. All of these are unique in some way, all of these services are unique in some way. So none of these guidelines are meant to prohibit the services to these groups, and we will make whatever changes are, we will make alterations within the plan as necessary to make sure that we provide services to these groups. All right, so I guess some closing comments. So again, the recommendations tonight reflect our current plan for the 21-22 school year. And I will take a chance here, if there are any edits or changes, we can do that before we finish this. But I do want to say, we are, we are obviously in a fluid situation right now, both within our community and our region of the state and our state overall. So we have one month till school opens, and my hope is that when school opens, that we are under everything that I said tonight. That is our intent, that is our plan. I'd like to be able to promise and guarantee that. I don't know that we're, I'm in a position to do so. Again, that is our intent. Overall, I'll just say, you know, we're, this is school. We are seeking to do everything we can to provide the education and the services necessary to our kids and family. I'd like to believe we've been a positive part of this community for a long time. You know, when you say the school district, at times it comes across as this nameless, faceless, just entity monolith. It's not. All of us are community members, we're parents. We care about the community, and I promise you, we are doing everything we can to provide the services to our kids that they deserve and need. The problem, one of the problems is, we're all seeking normalcy in this time of abnormality. And when you're trying to do that, conflict naturally occurs. Not going to pretend that, that we don't notice the difference in opinion and the difference in approaches that people want to see within our community, and we might as well acknowledge that. My presentation tonight will cause, I'm sure, a lot of conversation in the community, and there will be a lot that are unhappy with the parts, and those same parts, there will be a lot that are happy with. There's no getting around that. We are trying to design a school year that meets the health and wellness goals for our kids, provides for academic progress, and has done so in a way that, that addresses their social and emotional wellness. And sometimes, some of those things conflict with each other, and we're trying to do the best we can to find our balance. So again, I hope that school doesn't become something that becomes a wedge issue between different groups. We are trying to provide services to our kids, we're trying to do it in a positive way, we're trying to do it in a responsible way. And I would just ask that people keep that in mind. We are doing the best we can, and we know there is no perfect solution, or we would put that in place. We are trying to strike a delicate balance here and be sure that we can provide the services to our kids in a responsible way. And that's all I have, so. If there are changes to any parts of this plan, everything that I presented up here is in the text of that plan. And everything that I communicated up here is communicated in there, and they match. If there are sections that you see, anything that I talked about that we need to edit, we can certainly do that.
Does anyone have any comments or any changes that you would like to the document? No? Okay.
It's very thorough.
Yeah.
It is.
I appreciate all the thought and time.
It's taken a lot of effort, I know, to pull it all together.
I think you've touched every aspect of, of what we're thinking and what other school districts are doing, and so we very much appreciate that.
We will need some type of approval of the plan to move forward if that's, if we're to that point. If you're to that point of wanting to do that.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I appreciate making the mask optional for students, I think that's a good idea.
Thank you.
The personal choice.
All right, so can I get a motion then to approve the SRCSP?
I'll make that motion to approve the plan.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you.
As we said, everyone is welcome to stay. Typically, sometimes people hear what they want during that part and then they take off for the evening. We won't be offended at that either, it's up to you. So thank you for coming tonight. If you have questions after our presentation, please reach out to my office tomorrow, and I'd be happy to communicate with you guys if you have questions.
I just want to say briefly, I just want to thank you again for allowing us the opportunity to come forward with the board and express our opinions. And I really do feel strongly that the board has done everything in the best interest of the students and the community. And I do appreciate that. And I think we've learned a lot over the course of the year, all of us.
All of us, yeah.
All of us, school, community-wise. And so I do want to express my appreciation in that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, okay, so we're going to move on to our agenda, to the consent. A consent agenda is utilized by the RALAB Board of Education as a means of dealing with routine matters, which must be considered by the Board of Education, but required a minimum of discussion. All Board of Education members receive and review written information reporting the items listed on the consent agenda well in advance of the meeting. While any Board of Education member is welcome to remove any item from the consent agenda for separate consideration or discussion for any reason, normally, all items on the consent agenda are approved in one motion with a minimum of discussion. So those are items A through J. Does anyone have any comments for those? Okay, can I get a motion then to approve?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you. All right, moving on then to new business. Health insurance update and rate approval by Dr. Dair.
Okay, all of you do have a single sheet that I believe is just in the front of your packet, or somewhere there. You can certainly look that over, I won't go over that in detail tonight, but that is the best summary of our plans. You have certified on one side and support on the other. We're here tonight to talk to you about our employee health insurance program. I want to give you a little bit of background, especially for some of you that don't live with this every day. But since 1993, the board has, the board did make the decision to go to a self-funded plan. So that means that the monies that we pay as a district into an insurance fund retain here in the district. We do partner with BPJ as our broker, and then with UMR United Healthcare as our carrier. So they handle all the claim payments and all the management of the system. But we are, we are retaining those funds here in the district. In 2007, the support staff were rolled into that same plan, so everybody has the same insurance options. The district currently pays 100% of certified, the base plan for the certified staff, and 90% for support staff, if they choose to participate. Little bit of history there of our premium increase, going back to 2017, we had a 10% increase, and then the, a couple of years after that, 5, 5, and 3 last year. With Kendra's, you know, we always try to be conservative, so we're always looking at budgeting higher, seems like, than what we end up doing. But we feel like we have to do that, there are so many unknowns in the insurance world. And as you all know, health and healthcare is just not a cheap thing, especially if you're getting good healthcare. So we're always cautious with that, and we're always mindful of what those numbers are doing. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we go through here. We do have regular meetings with BPJ, Tanya Grievan is our direct rep there. I do want to say on Tanya's part, not only is she very helpful for us and our staff in managing the plan, but if we have an employee with an issue, she is the first contact. And she, she allows us to hand out her cell phone number at random to all of our employees, and they, they are normally very satisfied with the assistance she gives them. And the benefit there is she knows the language, and she also has access to their, to their records and can, and can get directly involved. We try very hard to protect the employees' privacy, we do not see their claim information. We get holistic reporting, so we see high-cost claimants and we see high-cost drug usage and those kind of things, but it's by injury or by managed plan or by prescription, it's not by name. So we do not know individual information, we're very careful with that. In addition, BPJ helps us with, with just employee education. Again, this being our self-funded plan, this is our insurance plan, and it is up to all of us within our district to be responsible with the use of these funds. And so we want people to use the insurance, that's not the thing. We don't ever want anyone to say, well, I'm not going to do that because it's going to hurt the insurance fund. We want people to be careful and managed with their healthcare, make good decisions, and understand that there is a role that everyone plays in that process. We do try to keep up-to-date insurance information on our district webpage, there is a special section there that's for staff only. We keep an FAQ section and current rates and plans and contact phone numbers and all the information that, you know, nobody needs insurance at eight o'clock on a Tuesday morning, you need it at midnight on a Saturday night, and they may not be able to find people. So we try to put everything out there so they can get to that as best they can. And any resources that are forwarded us, we try to send those out directly to the, to the folks. I won't spend a lot of time on this slide, we do have three benefit plan options, we're not proposing any changes to those plans, those are the current plans that we offer now. The base plan, there's a buy-up plan, and then the high deductible plan. The board does put a little bit of funds into the HSA, the high deductible cooperative fund there for those that choose that piece, and that's on your sheet. It's, it would be $62 for next year if you approve this. And again, you have all that information on your sheet, I'm not going to spend a lot of time with that, there are no changes recommended this year. There are no changes recommended this year. Additionally, and of course, this year with COVID, we've seen, we've had the Teladoc option for a while. We saw a great increase in Teladoc usage this year. That's no surprise. A lot of offices were closed and those kind of things. But for the most part, that's a, that's a fairly painless experience. You can call and if, if you have, you know, the ability for them to see you with their, your phone and those kind of things, they can, they can take you through a full process and order scripts and do those things. Those are minor things. And we, we always laugh and kind of joke and we tell people, you know, if you think you need an antibiotic because you have a sinus infection called Teladoc, if you're not sure how many stitches you need, Teladoc is not the right thing for you. So again, educating on what the right choices are. But always in an attempt to, to just manage our cost in, in our plan. Employee Navigator is our online tool, so all of our employees go through an online process and they select their benefits. We don't do that for them. We're happy to answer questions and that, but, but each employee is responsible for choosing their own program that best works for them. We do have a health and wellness program. When we switched to UMR and United Healthcare from Anthem, this was one of the things that, that they kind of sweetened the pot with for us. And then COVID hit. And so, we had plans for wellness fairs and all kinds of things and, and weren't able to do those. So, they've been very gracious in allowing us to carry over those funds. And we feel like we're now at a point where we can start to utilize some of those. So the, the thing we've chosen to do in working with our committee, which has representatives from each building in each area, is, is an incentive for a wellness visit. Less than, less than 30%, less than one out of every three of our employees get their no-cost annual wellness exam. And we know through fact that anyone getting that wellness exam, that is the best way to find out early detection, to monitor for, for lifetime things, blood sugar, cholesterol, all those types of things. And so, we're not, we're not mandating it, it's not required. But we are trying to encourage people to use that benefit that exists in the hopes that ultimately, it will help our, our managed care. So, at, at that 30% level, we are well below the United Healthcare, UMR industry rate for schools. And I'm not sure why that is. But we're trying to encourage people to do that. That's going to be our focus this upcoming year is to educate people on what that means. It's any wellness exam. So it's, it's the Well Woman's exam or a, you know, colonoscopies, those kind of things that are wellness-initiated, it counts. And again, with us staying private and not wanting to be involved in anyone's information, this is all handled from the insurance company. So they will send any of our employees that get that wellness exam directly a $30 gift card. So we are actually now paying people to get their wellness exam. And we're, we're hoping that that incentivizes that a little bit to, to get that done. But those are dollars that were set aside specifically for the health and wellness program. And then as we move into next year, we may try to, you know, we'll evaluate kind of how things go as we wrap up this year and, you know, evaluate what that looks like and see what we can do for next year, but.
Dr. Dare?
Ma'am.
Do they reduce the premium any if they do go and get a wellness check or?
No.
Do any of those type of things?
Nothing on the premium side. Well, but, but our premium costs are ours. So the premium costs pay into our fund, so.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't serve us to reduce that necessarily. It's a good, good question. Okay, I do want to mention the voluntary coverages. So part of this renewal process, we do meet with, again, with BPJ and we talk through these coverages. These are not board-paid. These are fully at the, at the cost of the employee if they choose to participate. However, it is part of our contract and agreements and, and we do manage these for the employees through payroll deduction. So there's no change to vision or life rates for this coming year and, and no plan changes for any of these. We did see a 9% jump in dental. Originally, they came back, Kendra helped me hire, it was like 28% or something. And I think BPJ kind of went to bat for us. Again, no surprise, what we saw was very little dental usage during the COVID times because a lot of offices just weren't seeing people or people were a little bit hesitant to do that. And then we had a giant surge, honestly, I think June was our huge, just, just this last couple of months ago. So I think everybody waited till school got out and then went to the dentist for the first time in two years. It's kind of what it looked like. So BPJ went to bat for us and kind of beat them down a little bit on that increase back to 9%. But just wanted to make sure you're aware that we do, we do work through those processes as well. Our year-to-date data, so our plan year, program year for our insurance runs October 1 to September 30. So we don't have full year data, but at this point, from October 1 to June 30, our total claims so far have been 3.2 million. Our total discount through UMR has been just over 2.5 million. And our employees have paid out of pocket through either deductibles or coinsurance or copays around 683,000. So that's just kind of give you an idea of the, the amount of money that we're moving through those funds. So in summary, last year, this, this past school year, our, our board paid rate was at $700 per month. Our fund balance as of June 30, 2021, in our claims fund is 3.6 million. Our, kind of our standard there and, and what we, what we were looking at a couple of years ago was seeing a, a sharp decline in that fund. And so, in reviewing the, the actuary tables and looking at that information, 3 million kind of keeps us in a healthy mark. So our goal there is about 3 million in that fund as a minimum. That will fluctuate, of course, as you, at year-to-year. But we are up about 587,000 since October. And since we switched to UMR United, we're up about 1.4 million in that claims fund. Now, COVID has happened in there, so there is some, some chance that people have put off elective things and that kind of thing. But all in all, we feel like the program is working and doing what it's designed to do. Our suggestion, our recommendation to you tonight would be a 3% increase. Now, you might say if 3 million's our goal and we have over 3 million in there, why do we need to increase? Well, obviously, costs increase. And we, we know from, from just the tables in general that, that kind of the typical rate of increase is actually more in the 5% to 8% range. But we've developed like 3% is, is responsible. And at the same token, not excessive. So we did budget for 5%, but we feel confident in, in reducing that to a 3% increase. So for our support staff that pay 10% of the base premium, that would be an increase of $2.10 per month for them. And I, I have a little summary slide here and I realize now that it's impossible to read. But again, for the base plan, the, the, the school district pays the full amount for the employee and then a $2.10 increase for the support staff.
Do you know how many people are in the HSA as opposed to the?
I don't have that number directly, I can get it for you, Mark. It's not, it's not, Kendra, do you know off the top of your head roughly?
I know it's increased.
It has increased.
And how many people do the buy-up?
I'll, I'll get that information for you. I don't, I don't have that with me tonight. It's very few in the buy-up.
Really?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's costly. Any other questions? I'll send that out to all of you.
You know, motion? Right, can we get a motion then to approve that?
I do have one more question before we do a motion. My wife is still on the plane. So does that mean that I shouldn't vote?
No, it's okay because it's for everyone. It's, it's holistic for the, for the whole district, so it's not specifically for your wife. So it's okay, yeah. Yeah, it's okay in this situation.
Okay, would someone like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve the proposed health plan options.
A second to that.
Alright, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
Thank you.
Alright, so next up is you again. New teacher position.
I don't have slides for you and I'm not going to leave the lights off because we're going to roll right on here. But we have monitored this pretty closely and Dr. Fulton brought this to our attention earlier in the year. We've, we've kind of watched the enrollments in, in, in the hopes of not needing to add a position. But based on enrollment numbers and the scheduling process that they've gone through, we are at least three hours, in need of at least a three-hour person for science at the junior high, possibly four. What we're proposing to you tonight would be to add a full-time certified position. So to handle that three or four hours of the science teaching that needs to happen there to, to keep the class numbers manageable and, and actually physically fit in the room in a couple of instances. And then for the remaining part of that full-time position to support our virtual learners. We are switching to a different platform. We're not, it would just be mainly a point of contact to, to run reporting and kind of keep an eye on, on those students and, and increase our level of support there. Our plan would be whatever portion that is, we can use our ESAR funds to help offset that cost for that virtual support piece.
Any questions, space, space an issue?
We have a classroom. We'll, we'll do some shifting and shuffling over there, but, but it's very manageable. Yep, we can, we have, we have a room available.
That's the science room.
It, it would be a sci, yeah, and it's actually one of the rooms across the hall from the science labs, but, but it's, it's, it's functional for what we need.
Anybody have any questions? Alright, can I get a motion then to approve the additional junior high science?
I'll make that motion.
Somebody'd like to second it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
Thank you.
Moving on then to item 5C, Board of Education future dates. So we have our next meeting will be August 19th, then September 2nd and 16th, and then October 7th and the 21st. Does anybody have any issues with those dates? Alright, moving on now to our long-range facility and program update.
Me again. I, I'm very pleased that you don't have to listen to me, you're probably done with that already. No, I'm, I'm very pleased that, that we have Mark and Dennis and Melissa from Hunter and Associates with us tonight. They have some, what I think you're going to find to be some very exciting things to share with you with progress on our projects and kind of looking forward down the road a little bit here. Very grateful for them to be here. And before they come up, I do want to say that, you know, over the course of these past few months, obviously, we've worked a lot more together than, than, and hadn't had that experience before. It's been very pleasant. They're a very great team to work with and very collaborative. We, we communicate constantly. I'm sure they're tired of hearing from me and, and those kind of things, but it's, it's been very good. So I'm very happy that they're here to share with you tonight.
Well, thank you.
She's here to keep you on track. She's here to keep you on track.
That's, that's exactly right. Because Dr. Dare says we wanted to bring Melissa because truth be of the matter, she does all the work in the office. But no, she's a great teammate and, and likewise, working with Dr. Dare and all the committees. We're just going to give you, we, we're not voting on anything tonight, so all we're going to do is give you an update. And we're going to kind of tag-team because Dennis is going to do a little bit of an update on some of the projects that are currently under, under construction. And then I'll get into the high school and we'll still kind of tag-team on that as well. So Dennis, with that said.
We're just going to hit the, the projects. I'm going to talk in particular about the RTI in junior high school. Then Mark will take over and talk about high school and so on. And we'll talk about the schedule as we get in further in. Just an update on the RTI in the junior high school project that, that was approved, I think, back in March, I believe. Work is progressing fairly well over there. From the north side, toilet rooms in this area to the new front entry, to the cable, new cabling that Ginger King is responsible for, plus the water line replacement. I can report also that the new water line that RMU was to put in, I think was flushed out yesterday.
I saw it today.
Yeah.
There was water running down.
Okay, they're still flushing today then.
Okay.
I was here yesterday and they were flushing it, so.
Yeah.
We haven't made the, the connection between the two, but that should happen before school starts, so. Keep the fingers crossed that we have clean water when, when school opens up over the RTI. We should, we will. And then this is the autotech shop area. There's a lot of activity going on in there from hanging duck work to getting ready to paint the new, paint the ceiling out so it brightens up the space. They started cutting the hole in for the new overhead doors, so we have additional base space in there as well. The outdoor classroom, not much going on there. With the conditions these days, that product can't even be delivered until early December. They're planning on starting their footings and foundations in the next couple of weeks over there. We'll see some activity within the next two to four weeks.
And not to cut you off there, that's that pre-engineered metal canopy. So it's steel.
I didn't know what it was.
Yeah, it's the steel canopy that, that's just not there.
And junior high school, there's not a lot to see other than rock.
And fence.
And fence, a lot of fence.
A lot of fencing.
A lot of fencing, yes. And whether or not it's been done today or not, I know we're going to rearrange some of the fencing. I know Dr. Dare met with the.
I saw a dumpster was moved and.
Yep, that's all part of the coordination with getting ready for school starting and parent drop-off, pickup.
So will, they'll still do parent drop-off on the backside of the building?
So we will actually, we will actually use that entrance where the current, where the fence is now.
Okay.
We will, we'll shift that fence back. That will be the only in and out for parent drop-off. So we'll close that other entry. And that will allow us to get more cars off of Pine Tree, Pine Street.
Does that leave enough for all the staff to park in that?
So Dr. Fulton and, Dr. Fulton and I met with Doug James and, and members of the police department and went through. We have assigned staff a parking spot, so everybody has their spot. There are still a couple of visitor spots in the front, but we, we've set aside parking for all the staff. We'll actually have two lanes of parent drop-off and then they'll merge into one. Again, just trying to get more traffic off the street. But all of that will be sent out. Dr. Fulton has all that ready to go and sent out with their, their parent packets and all those kind of things. Yeah, that's a great question.
So it's the second drive-in then that will be the one that's closed off?
No.
Or it'd be the?
Well, depends on which way you're going. It's the one that's currently the exit.
Yes.
Will be the entrance and exit.
Okay.
The, the one that's currently the entrance will be closed off completely.
Okay.
As I said, they're really just kind of scratching the surface, doing some excavation work, starting to find the rock that we were expecting to find.
We grow it here.
Pardon?
We grow it here.
We'll, we'll know in the next couple of weeks how much we're taking out, so. But that's, between that and the fence, obviously, and some storm sewer work, I think you'll quickly start to see some activity, more activity going on there as, as.
Is there anything materials-wise there that's delayed?
Not at the moment. I think the pre-cast is panels for the storm shelter walls and roof are pretty much on target. We did switch to steel beams versus steel joists at a no-cost change that the contractor was, was able to work through with the suppliers. You can't buy a steel joist now for nine or 12 months. It's just that far out, so. They were able to, to secure that, which was a great, great benefit for the project. And that's about it. Let Mark take it from there.
Just to, we basically wanted to just kind of give you an update now on the high school. Dennis and Melissa have been coming down, meeting with Dr. Dare and the staff to kind of go through each one of the, the departments, the gym, the, the coaches, the drama. So just to get their input. And with that input, we're coming back and been changing and working on the, on the documents. But as, as we got into this, I just wanted to kind of, there've been a lot of challenges as we, as we get into the different aspects of the project. The, we've just listed a few here. And that's just the start. But I mean, just, it's one of those, the challenges, we kind of take a step forward. We have to kind of take a step back with, as we get into more detail and as we meet with people. But one of the things that's been a real challenge is the grade change across the site of 14 feet from the front to the back. And I think we kind of mentioned that as we were getting into. But then also to be able to give the entrance, a significant entrance as we, as we get into, as we enter into the auditorium. And then get from the auditorium down the 14 feet into the commons and then into the auditorium. The large addition to the existing building that connects along the, the existing building. So everywhere we're connecting, each place that a building has been added on to or there's been a different construction type or a different addition. I think it's been four additions we're tying up to. It's about 600 lineal feet that we're actually tying on to. So everywhere along there, it's usually a different type of a detail. And so, that's been an interesting dilemma to get through. There's six different roof levels along that way. There are 12 different floor elevations that we're tying into.
Are creating.
Are, are creating. So there's, it's, it's really, it's, it's been an interesting and project, but we're really, it's, we're really liking how it's coming together. There's some complicated egress paths. There are some complicated egress paths as we've added on. If you can think of, when I go to the plan, where you enter into the new auditorium, or performing arts auditorium, we had to keep egress paths coming out of the gym cuz we're burying some gymnasiums and some corridor spa- or some spaces that we still have to make access out of. And I can't tell you how many times, Melissa and Dennis, I sat there and looked at these, I, I wanted to call it the Hall of Doors, because it just seemed like there were so many doors that have to have egress out and going different directions. But I think the last meeting they had, they had a, it was kinda like an aha moment, we were meeting with the drama, and I think we really have a good solution to that, that, alignment of firewalls and separation from the new construction, reinforcing of the existing stage, if you remember, we were raising the stage because of, just to be able to work with some of the drama department, with some of the needs that they had, along with the face of the proscenium, we needed to open up a little bit more as well. So that's been a challenge, along with, there's three different construction types along the stage as you move from the north, east to the west, east to the west. So it's just been, when Dr. Dare's telling you we've gotten these things, we wanted to also kinda reinforce them, so you realize what we're going through, but, or the challenges for. So again, this is a plan, existing main entrance, you can see there, the fieldhouse connection and corridor, the fieldhouse there on the, on the south side. And as you look at this, we're, as we're doing the, basically work through details and work with our structural, mechanical, electrical, and we've been kinda working from the fieldhouse. Did I hit something? Obviously I did. There we go. So we're working from the fieldhouse to the north as we work through the, around the wrestling room, along the outdoor classroom, the performing arts entrance, the storm shelter, the band, and then into the performing arts. It's just the way we've kinda looked, the performing art, I'm sorry, the fieldhouse, a lot of those details were able to come together a little bit quicker, and so we were keeping staff going and working in that direction. So some of the things we'll show you, they might not be as detailed in the performing arts, but that's, that's where we're at now, working through the details, along with the storm shelter, which is the band and the choral in that space. The, I want you to, the colors that you'll see here, when we work through Revit and we produce these, the colors are gonna match the existing brick that we've been using, but we have to kinda trick the Revit, because a lot of times it's in real time, so if it's on a north elevation, we gotta have the sun at an angle to kinda show the colors, and it just is off, but if you, don't get real caught up on the colors, cuz the colors are going to be matching the existing campus. But that there is the main entrance, to the north, there'll be a canopy, kind of a congregation area before and after performances or whatever, even for students to be out there. And we had to work with the grades to get back down to the north side where the parking and the ramp and the driveline is. And then the main entrance, it's a large volume of space to come in, and then from inside, you're gonna go down that 14, the steps to get into the entrance, going into the commons. To the right is where the, I guess this would be, well, I'll get to that, but this is the exterior images of the fieldhouse and the main entrance. These have not changed much, the colors, again, I want you to realize that the colors were still, that's just a computer thing, and also the imagery, on our computer, it looks fine when we're at the office, but when it goes through different gyrations, but we'll, we'll be able to give you a little bit more detail on that as we get into it. This, on the inside of the courtyard, the outdoor classrooms, if you remember, that's the space. If I went back, does everybody remember where the outdoor, I'm gonna go back so I can show you on the plan. The outdoor classroom there, if you remember when we were going through this, this is an area, you come up on the parking lot, and then you look down, this area out here is an outdoor area that works really well for future expansion of four classrooms. And this is a corridor that comes from the fieldhouse to the north, through here into the band and choir, into the commons in this area. But this outdoor classroom area, we figured if we filled that space, and down the road, if you ever wanted to build classrooms, then you would have to re-excavate it out. So what we've done, and it's gonna be difficult to get to, so we turned it into an outdoor classroom. It's gonna be, it's gonna be concrete, so, and stepped concrete, so it can be utilized by the, by the students, or whatever, but at least that way, you're not maintaining it for one. And if you remember, that was just, it was gonna be a little bit more cost, but yet, the cost to go back in there and dig it back out was just gonna be astronomical to then go build back down to build those four classrooms. And on this campus, this is the one area where you can still utilize as four classrooms in that area for future growth. So it's just kind of a, it's a, it's kind of a feature, but it's also going to be, give you the future growth for those four classrooms. And then even after we've done that, you're still gonna have about 12 to 14 feet from the wall to that first step, and that can still then be, and it really is just an area so you don't have to maintain it, cuz if you're maintaining that, it's, and that does not show drains, and I don't remember, somebody asked about drains, there will be drains, multiple drains in that area, so.
And that little overhang entrance, that's the wrestling room entrance, or is there a?
That goes into where the concessions.
That would be relatively where the wrestling room is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be relatively close.
And I'll have a plan here that'll kinda answer that question, so. Please, if there's any questions along the way, I'm, we're throwing a lot of information at you. So this, again, it goes back to the plan, the fieldhouse, the practice gym, alternate, where there'll be an alternate for the AC in there, we don't have a lot of alternates, but that will be an alternate. Then you've got your, your link, I don't, here we go. The link gets you to the commons and to the storm shelter, the commons area there with the band and the choir, and then the access going into the performing arts center.
Mark, I don't wanna cut you off, but it was interesting in our last meeting, one of the staff members brought up, if you look at that, that plan, not square footage-wise, but just footprint-wise, the new area and the, and the, and then the gym to be reconfigured to the auditorium, how much space at the high school we're truly touching or creating, it's a massive addition. It really is.
It really, it's gonna change the whole front and the whole campus as, as things come together, and it's, it's gonna be exciting. And then these are just some 3D image, 3D images, but also then larger plans of the, the fieldhouse. You've got the coaches' offices on the south side, boys' locker rooms, varsity locker rooms, elevator as you come in that main entrance, so you can get up to the mezzanine. And this is where some of those level changes occur in that area, that firewall then, on the, on the east side there as well. But then you'll have a commons that will come in, you have display cases to, in that area there, just for a real nice entrance coming in, having the display area. And then it'll be duplicated with the women's locker rooms and varsity locker rooms, training room on the opposite, on the north side. And then you'll go through there and just right here, Charlotte, was where that canopy is, right there. So you'll come down these steps, you're up outside, and this, here is the plan, a key plan that kinda shows you what part of the building we're looking at. And you'll come down those steps, and you'll go in, there'll be concessions right here, and then there'll be, you know, places where they can get their concessions and, and, computer table, or like a high table to be able to, so it's, it's coming together, and like I said, this is really gonna be exciting on this. This is the mezzanine level, then on the upper level, you'll have bleachers, batting cages, three gym divider curtains, full 50 by 94 court below. You have the batting cage on the opposite side, again, practice, two practice courts below, and three volleyball courts below as well. And then you'll have the stairs on the west end over here, so you'll come in, you'll come up the stairs or the elevator, you have this mezzanine, and then the walking track that will go around the entire perimeter. So it's, there's a view of, looking from the mezzanine down, little bit difficult to see just in the scale, but we'll, as we, as we get through, again, the colors too, there's gonna be a lot more maroons and things of that nature, that's a whole other process we'll get into. This is the, this is that area with a little bit more detail. You can see here, we cut a section through the lobby coming in, looking to the south. And so this is that lobby as you look, you'll be coming in, the lobby upstairs, and then coming down. There'll be a elevator in the center with steps on both sides, so you can come in from outside, from the drop-off, come in elevator and go down to this, you come in here, you come down to the, this main level, and then go into the commons. So you can see getting from that elevation down and doing it in a way that, keeping that elevation on the upper side large enough to give it that dramatic entrance that you come in. And then the, the band lockers are on the outside here, right here along this corridor that goes from the commons and from the auditorium down back to the, the fieldhouse, you go around this corner and then back to the, to the fieldhouse over here. Bathrooms, concession stand, and again, that area where you come in right here. So back to those outdoor classroom, we've left openings in here so that this is the area that we're talking about, that would be the four additional classrooms. I'm not saying it's gonna be really easy to build that in there, but at least they'll be able to, they won't be excavating the earth back out, and for the time being, we can utilize that space in there. One, to keep natural light coming in, and then also to try to keep problems from, also from, the one thing we're, we're working, looking at right now is we wanted to keep that down so students and whoever can't get onto this roof and easily get throughout your hole. So on this roof right here, we're gonna need to put a screen in order to protect against that right here at this corner. But it's, it's coming along, so, but we just wanted to be able to show you because, and so here's where you come into that main commons, coming into the, and above, you'll come in through, above here, you come down the steps, if you remember from one of the last meetings, I think in May, we utilized the space underneath that opening, or underneath the main, because we were gonna have to excavate it anyway, so we put back in uniform storage. It was a really good use of that space, along with some choral music, and then that corridor again that goes, you'll have a, the band room, the practice rooms and such off of it, the main commons coming into the, into the, into the building with the, the choral music, bathrooms. And then this is that area we were talking about that was just, we had to keep this corridor open, and we had to be able to come directly through and get into the existing auditorium slash new performing, performing arts, and to still allow this to come out. At one time, we had walls here to be able to come out, where you had to come in and through here to be able to get into your scene shop and things of that nature. So now you'll come in, if you're building props and things of that nature, you'll be able to come in this back area here, unload, come through here, up a ramp, and then into the scene shop and backstage. And then also allow the access out of the gym, the existing practice gym, back through this direction here. We did look, there was a board member, Jim had asked about possibly even looking at trying to get access out this way, and what we did is rather than having an, we had to have it this direction for being able to get load, loading and things of this nature into the backstage, that we didn't wanna open this up and have another area for, for students to go back and not be under. Yeah, yeah. So we've got storage back there, and then this here is the weight room, I'm sorry, the wrestling room right here, so. It's come together, and then now, there'll be an entrance from the outside here that will be a little bit more of a nicer entrance coming through here into the, into the performing arts. So the commons area here is where you'll come in, come down, and then into the, the main commons, which we threw, through discussions with the staff, wanted certain widths and heights in there, so there could be, this could actually be, you know, during performance, it's a lobby, but it's also gonna be used for band and, and things of that nature, so it's almost like a built-in classroom that we're utilizing in there, so.
So I, I spent a few years loading and unloading band trailers for marching band, I'm sure you've done that too. And I love that you've got a spot for uniform storage, that's been a problem in the past. I'm just thinking about how uniform stored, a rack of uniforms gets out of the building from that place.
So, so two, two big options, one, Dennis is highlighting there at the back of that, so that's, if you think about the alley by the current gym, that's really what that is, but it, but it's kinda, there's a drive, and actually a full driveway on that side.
Part that will still be there.
So that will all still be there.
Okay.
And then also, there's a door out of the, the choral room, which is that second band room right there, that goes out to that same driveway.
Oh, nice.
And so they'll actually be able to use both of those, both of those are double-door entries.
I was just trying to imagine some of those big racks hanging in a little elevator and.
Yeah, yeah, no, it'll all be on that same grade.
Okay, that's nice. Well, it's not just the uniforms, it's all the instruments, the things that are coming out of lockers.
And it also, with that access back out to that alley, it still gives them the direct access down to the football field.
Nice.
So they can line up and march straight down like they do now.
Great.
I'm gonna go back to the slide plan if you want me to take them, just so you can kinda see that, if that would. Bear with me here. Other way, yeah. Jump through Truman.
Other way.
Take my word for it. Okay? Almost there, okay. So this is the area, this here is 10th, so that door is right here. So you'll be able to pull in here, and then there's also a drive that'll go through this way here. I just.
They won't have to back in off of 10th Street, they can actually take the drive and, yeah, great.
Will they just store the trailers then, right there?
We'll, we'll have to work that all out, some of those are, we'll have to work that out, yeah.
But.
Sure they'll find a spot.
But very good question, and the things that we've been trying to hash out because of the, the different elevations and things of that nature, and then the access to the backstage that we were talking about, so. So then as we move into the, this is a section, yeah, section of the, the commons, so you can kinda see the height here, where there's, this here is the storm shelter, and there's ceiling, what's the height we're looking at, about 16 feet? About 16 feet, there'll be duct work and stuff, and electrical up in this area, but good height in that space, but also then for practice of, of band and things of that nature. Then as we walk in, as we get into, come into the, the doors right here again, this is that area we were referring to that was really doing a toll on us as far as working through all the doors and egress, and it's just kinda finally came together, and it's really just very simple, we just needed to keep it simple, and I think that's what. But this here then is the main, the performing arts level, stage, 62-foot wide proscenium. Stage sixty-two foot wide proscenium, thrust stage, seating. And then this here is roughly around two thousand square feet of storage below the seats there as well. And then, um, doors back out through a light lock into the existing, uh, where your existing, uh, entrances from the school side. Which we think that'll still be pretty prominent entrance coming in because people will be still parking back down and on the campus. Again, a, a, a view in the, uh, we're still working through some of the details as we work through with the, uh, mechanical, electrical and acoustical engineers. Uh, so that's still coming together as we work through that. Upper level, then as you'll, um, you come up the steps back to a, a spotlight platform in the back, control booth, and then a spotlight platform on the other side with a lift to get up there as well. And that's the view from the back of the, uh, Performing Arts Center. Section through, you've got the stage, this area, stage thrust right here as you come out. House. And then the stage going up. And then this is the storage beneath that area here, ranging from anywhere from, I think, seven, six to twelve foot. So a, a, a sufficient amount of storage space underneath there as well. Truman, um, if you remember with one time, we were looking at options back here in the back, which we've walked, gotten through that. Now we've put it, gone back to, um, out in the front here where you see as you come in, this is your main, turn, turn area, and this is your parking out in the front. Got a storm shelter for six hundred and forty, which is represented right here in the dashed area right here. Which is gonna be utilized as a library and breakout rooms and classroom. Main entrance is right here as you come in. Your current main entrance is right here with your offices here. Now the administration will come across the hallway and be, whoops, be right out in the front. So a new secured vestibule that you'll come in and directly into the main office, desk, offices in the back, conference room, and, um, and then also additional storage here that we're gonna try to utilize for the kitchen so that maybe they can take some of the load off of, what's going on in the existing kitchen by putting some in here with, also with some storage. This area here is, we've gotta hold the building off the existing by about five to six feet because the footings and foundations that will be in the storm shelter are enormous. So we gotta hold that off. So rather than just, waste the space, we're gonna turn it into storage, um, which will, is always a nice thing in a, in a school building. So. And then you got the bathrooms in this area here.
So I just have a question about the library. It looks like it's not completely enclosed.
It, no, what we've done.
I mean, as a library room?
So, yeah, no, it's within four walls. Now, there is a classroom inside it, but it's also walled. So it's just, it's just basically through the main entrance and into the classroom door. But yeah, no, it's absolutely in, in its own walled off space.
Cause I thought that was part of our original.
Yes.
Issue.
Yeah, thi- this, the library is represented right here.
And the plans, the other, the other little room there, the plans from, from the Truman staff are, that will be Title I reading. And then possibly the other little room will be like ELL supports with off the library. It makes perfect sense.
And, you know, we, we, we came through, had a number of different plans here. And it was beneficial to be able to, I think we agreed upon that you can come right in and go directly into this classroom, right off the corridor and not disrupt the remainder of the, and then there's a little breakout rooms here along with the teacher's desk, uh, or I'm sorry, the checkout desk right here with an office that kinda controls that whole front. In the, and then there's also bathrooms within the library that need to be there for, it's, but kind of a benefit for the library, but they need to be there for the storm shelter. So it's, um, and then also we've looked at this area back here, which is the, which is the existing library and basically it's just gonna be cleaned up, painted, flooring. It's just gonna really be kind of a pass-through space at that point in time.
So it's not really a whole lot you can do with it?
The renovation?
I offered a bulldozer, but. Because, because of the, the, the structures, like the existing library office and it, it's kind of a rounded. But, but all the support columns are there. And so structurally, you can't move anything, but you can't really make it a square either. It, it's very awkward.
And it's, it's.
To say the least.
Poured and placed concrete columns. They really did it up good when they, and we did during our, 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 uh, study of this, we even looked at options of taking that down. One of the problems was if you rebuild this, you're basically taking the heart out of the whole campus. And now, just as a building project, to be able to, build that while keeping a campus safe throughout the course of almost a two-year process, was really, the expense of that really just kind of escalated. So we kinda walked away from that. And when we looked at a number, we looked back here, and, and then out in the front, and we looked at there, um, it's not a lot of other areas to go. There was an area on the site pla- for future growth to the back. You can put, uh, two, four cla- four classrooms back there. So there is some, growth potential there if you, if you needed, uh, relatively, um, economical, uh, spaces to put on extra classrooms.
Just for those that don't know, I had a classroom above the library. The last, yeah. Craig knows that.
The renovation work, um, we will be getting into that. We really don't have a lot, you know, as far as the, um, the, um, we're kinda leaving the security vestibules and things toward that toward the end. We have talked though about maybe grouping the security vestibules in with the Truman project. Just, just to kinda maybe, uh, economy of scale, um, and, um, we just think that might be a, a good option to, uh, to move forward with, just to kinda keep the schedule moving. And, um, cut, the project cost summary, we really haven't, you know, what, when we were talking previously, we, really the, the materials, manpower, all those things, it's the same. It sounds like a broken record. But right now, as we've gone through this, we think we, you know, there's a, every day we, we do this, we just get a little bit more worried. But we feel like now we're just kinda moving dollars around in the project. You know, we'll find a benefit in the new high school, then we find something that might cost a little bit more. But now we're just kinda moving dollars around. Now it's just a matter of, watching the, um, the economy and hopefully things start to balance out so we can start getting materials. Material deliveries are just, I, I, you know, we've had contractors have told us, I wouldn't wanna be bidding right now. And part of it is because how, in fairness to them, how do you put a dollar on something that, bar joyce, you can't get for nine months? I, I just. So, you know, I, I was gonna talk about a little bit later, but even, you know, we're, we're not asking for anything tonight. We're not, all we're doing is an update. But something we might, some districts are starting to talk about is hold off on issuing some of their projects. Just, and what we would do, we would still continue to get the drawings done. Talk, maybe talk to contractors, what's their workload and things of that nature. Because I see this as being in a really sweet spot as far as a project. So this is gonna keep, a contractor busy for multiple years. And, um.
You're talking the high school.
The, the high school project, the high school project. You know, you get, you get a contractor on board, they can keep, their men or their, their staff working for two years on this project. And so we're just, I'm just throwing it out there. There's, I think St. Clair, I thought I read St. Clair, I probably shouldn't be, but, they even kinda put a, just wanted to hold on seeing where the economy's going. So, don't have to do anything now, but it might just be something we'll, in four weeks, we can talk about it and just see where it's at. Schedule, I think we've kind of already talked about the, the schedule as well. We've added that three months. We're looking to be out on the market and ready in four to five weeks. We're, we're pushing here. We, we can always use more time, but we're, four to five weeks is where we're scheduled. The team, I think, is pretty much on the same page to do that. So, um, and the, the, the problem with delaying it, the, the things you've gotta think about, you know, I'm not talking about six months. I'm, it's probably more than a month. It's probably a little more than two, maybe three. A- and I don't know. We'll do more research on that. But, um, it starts to get into opening up the doors for your, for your, your basketball seasons and things of that nature. So there's a lot of things to talk about. Um, again, I'm just, other districts are, are considering some of these things. Think I already kinda, the, the one thing here we were talking about is just merging the, the projects, the, um, picking up. You know, the one thing here is we did, we were, I'm happy that we were able to get the junior high, we paired the, junior high and the RTI together. We got in right before some of those issues, we think. Because we've, the progress has been fairly good. And then that's why we're thinking on that last project Truman to put the, the security vestibules in with that. So. Any questions? There's a lot of information. And again, I am not suggesting, it's just something to think about. And we will continue to talk to contractors if we really wanna hit that window with some, some contractors. And we would be done to be able to put it out on the market when we, we think we can hit that sweet spot. But.
Just to add to kinda what Mark was getting at, we, we've been kinda surprised, you know, we thought we might have issues with HVAC systems. Those, we've seemed to be able to secure those. Those have been fine. We keep hitting roadblocks where we weren't expecting them, like ceiling tiles. We've been unable to even order ceiling tiles that normally we can go to Lowe's or Menards and just buy right off the shelf. We can't even place an order right now. Paint, we ran into an issue with paint. Uh, one of the paint suppliers is, is backordered. So it's strange places that we're running into issues. And right now I think it's more about transportation maybe than it is production. Just having the ability to get things from point A to point B, but. And, and the manpower to, to do the transportation, yeah. Um, so we, we are dealing with some of those things, but, uh, you know, it is, it is what it is. We're, we're dealing. And I, I will say that the contractor and the subcontractors have been, um, good to, to communicate and, and, and offer, suggestions or, or things they can do and, and keep us informed at least. So I, I, I've, the only other thing I wanna add is, you know, we've had, we have our construction meetings onsite every two weeks and we just had one yesterday. KNS has done a great job. Uh, I really can't say enough about their efforts to maintain the site and, and their, their concern about us getting schools started. Prioritizing the things to be in place that we need to start school at RTI. Uh, the safety and security pieces, the fencing, those items that they're, they're forward thinking on. It, it, it's been very impressive. So.
Are there some limits on the S R funding and when we have to get it spent by? If we use any of that funding to offset some of the increased costs?
So the S R funds that we had talked about at our work session, we still ha- we still don't have final guidance on for sure. But we will have through, the S R three year, help me here, Kendra, goes through, uh, September of twenty twenty-three or twenty-four. Yeah, so we have, we have plenty of time. Yes.
I knew we had to get a plan submitted.
Yes, yeah.
Fairly quickly. I just didn't.
But we have time, and we can revise it. We can submit revised plans and those kinda things.
And you bring up another point about spending the money down on the bond. So I'm sa- saying that, but I don't know about that. Part of.
Just as a reminder, we have three years to spend the bond money. That's a, that's a state statute. So that, that plays into our timeline a little bit. But we are spending the bond money prior to our committed capital projects money. If that makes sense. So the, the money we committed from our fund four will be spent last. So we, that helps buy us a little time as well. From, from the date of issuance.
Were there any other questions or any parts of the building that we can get back with you that, we just wanna make sure that, you're being informed in all these different little parts that, that we didn't, we can get to you, you know, that to.
It looks good.
Thank you very much.
I'm excited. Appreciate it.
You keep saying things are complicated and then you fix it. So.
Well, I, well, we'll just keep knocking on. We'll just make sure Melissa gets it fixed.
And we'll continue to let you come back.
Yes. No, thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, moving on. We have, uh, summer school update by Dr. Williams.
I'm so excited anytime I see any type of new bond project discussion because for me, everything goes back to student learning. And I reflect on different places I've visited and places that I've learned from. And the Truman situation, I'm pretty energetic about because, I specifically can think of three places right offhand that have open type project-based areas like we see where Truman's elementary used to be. The Fayetteville High School in Arkansas is open like that. And it's a brand-new project, like maybe two or three years old. Uh, Epic Elementary in Liberty, which is like a model school for the United States, has an open area like the Truman Library area. And then too, I'm reminded that in Springfield, Sherwood Elementary has a very open, in multiple areas, like what's left in the Truman area. So I think even visiting some of those places would be great for us to look at what they've done with that open space. Cause all types of projects and that type of thing can happen there. Okay, so I come tonight with a follow-up and a closure on our summer school update. Uh, do I have another one in August, Craig?
The only next one is when we wrap up some of the financial impact, but that could come August, could be September.
Okay. So we continue to serve the second summer semester. We're still in session at the high school. We have several students that are there in July. And I'm basically going to update you on the enrollment, transportation, course participation and so on. Thank you, Myra. Okay, I just wanna go back and say that Craig and I had the opportunity to drop off our cars, um, Jan- uh, July fifteen. We're once again thankful for all of the partnership we've had with Ed Morris. Because of them, this summer, we trained ninety-one new drivers. This is an update of the enrollment numbers from our most assist, uh, from our student information system. And you can see that our enrollment, uh, for twenty twenty-one, of course, we weren't present in the summer of twenty twenty and seated school. And so, um, we have five hundred forty-one at the high school, which you'll see when I put up a tr- a historical trajectory is, quite a bit of growth from what we've seen in the past. As a matter of fact, using descriptive statistics, we can show the total enrollment for each year has remained relatively consistent with a slight uptick in enrollment in the high school. We had, and as an end count, one thousand three hundred eighty-five total ADA for PK through twelve. And, uh, we have hosted quite a few more in the last four, than the last four seated summer schools for our trajectory of historical enrollment. I've updated this from the last time that I saw you and you can see the comparative from what we've had in the past. That the high school level has gone up tremendously, but we do have a, a very predictable pattern of who will attend. And I would, uh, say probably the growth in high schools is because of the increase of online opportunities for our students. There's so many more classes they can take than they've taken in the past. Our RPS summer school bus fleet ran eleven routes. We had four special needs buses and early childhood buses and we had one trip bus. So we had a total of sixteen of our fleet out during the summer. In the, uh, summer, we had four hundred and five total daily riders on our buses. School breakfast program. The National Food Research and Action Center reminds us that school meals are critical to student health and well-being. And they ensure that students have nutrition they need throughout the day to learn. Research shows that receiving free or reduced-priced school lunches reduces food, food insecurity and poor health. It's important for everyone to know that the National School Lunch Program, uh, and Breakfast Program is extended through the school twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. This means all children can receive free nutritious breakfast and lunch in the Roll. This means all children can receive free nutritious breakfast and lunch in the RALLA thirty-one school system. Reflecting on our total school breakfast meals served for the summer's term twenty twenty-one, we served two thousand seven hundred ninety-four breakfasts at the elementary level, two thousand eight hundred forty-eight at the middle school, four twenty-three at the high school, and we had actually three thousand seven hundred forty-eight pickup meals for breakfast.
Surprise.
Isn't that great?
That's awesome.
In the school lunch program, we see something very similar. We see a total of four thousand three hundred twenty-six lunches served at the elementary, five thousand nine hundred eighty-one lunches served at middle school, one thousand nine hundred forty-three lunches served at the high school, and three thousand eight hundred thirty-six picked up for lunch each day, for a total of twenty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-nine meals. It's just a wonderful thing that we have for our students and for, uh, all students of our community this summer. And I can't thank Beth Jet and her entire team enough, she is so great to work with, she's always positive when you speak to her, and we're so grateful for everything she does for our school system. Okay, here are just a few of the continuing courses going on at the high school. We have some credit recovery, and then we have a lot more courses than we used to offer. In most schools across Missouri, the traditional courses are health and PE, and some are as lucky as we are to continue driver's ed. Many schools don't have driver's ed anymore. But this year, if you'll look, we have a, an abundance of other courses which are offered both for credit acquisition and for credit recovery for our students. Although we finished, I wanna say that I'm so grateful to Dr. Corey Ray for manning our, uh, for holding down, not manning, holding down, our Summer School Program at the elementary, for Sherry Norman at the middle school, for Rob, uh, Rob Howke at the middle school, and Sherry Norman at the high school. The summer is a key time in students' cognitive and social development, and it plays an important role in the development of achievement gaps. As a result, summer interventions have the potential to not only mitigate summer learning loss, but also reduce persistent achievement gaps. Our administration and our staff have gone above and beyond for the benefit of our children. Are there any questions for any of you?
It's exciting.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great numbers.
All right, moving on down to comments, we have Emily Yocum with us this evening. Come on down, Emily.
Glad to have you back.
Yeah, it's good to see you. Kinda give us an update of what's been going on during the summer.
Um, starting August ninth, that will be the first day of high school fall sports. Also on August ninth, we have high school registration for seniors and juniors. And on August tenth, we have a high school registration for freshmen and sophomores. Also on August tenth is the junior high registration for seventh graders. And on August twelfth, we have junior high registration for eighth graders. And on August fourteenth, high school fall sport pictures will begin. And on August sixteenth, we have first day of junior high fall sports. On August eighteenth, we have freshman parent meeting, um, Project Fido will be meeting, and also freshman orientation. Those will all be on August eighteenth, and on August twenty-third, first day of school.
Great, what?
I'm excited and nervous. Also, uh, August twenty-eighth will be junior high fall sport pictures and RHS SAT exams.
Yay!
Finally, but not least, um, we lost one of our Bulldogs last week, my best friend, uh, Sierra Macy Pearl Martins. And, um, the, uh, the band is planning a celebration of life for her. It'll be sometime in the first week of August, they're still getting all the deets out, but, yeah, so, any questions?
Sierra is the, uh, daughter of our head custodian, Robert Martins, at the high school. So, certainly all last week, and continue to think about him and his family, and very difficult time for a lot of kids and, uh, teachers, and so, tough time at the high school. So Emily, I'd hate to ask that, but, summer, did you do any summer school? Did you take the summer off from summer school?
Um, I've been working a lot.
Good.
I worked on a construction crew, uh, putting walls up and doing roofs, um, and night shift, I worked, uh, price shopper, the service desk. I quit both of those jobs, um, I wanna enjoy my senior year, you know, not have to stress about, and I got a lot of stuff to do, like, clubs I'm a part of that I need my full attention for, but, um, I'll survive senior year and, on the money I've made so far, and then I'll just work like crazy after that. Yeah, I thought I'd enjoy senior year, so.
That's good for you.
Sophomore and junior year, and now it's time to enjoy the last year of my life.
High school life.
Yeah, um, so.
Just be sure you stay, stay committed to your studies, don't get senioritis and, and that, just finish strong, finish strong.
So Emily, we're going, we're, we're taking a good number of the board members out to see your work at the house tomorrow, so. We're gonna look, make sure that your initials aren't anywhere or anything.
Tell us where to look.
If you rip off the siding on the garage, um, door, you will find all of our initials.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
It's good to see you.
Good to see ya.
All right, any comments or events, uh, from anyone in the school?
Yeah, we did do, uh, graduation for, um, RTI. A couple of us were at that, at the junior high, but there hasn't been a whole lot else going on to go into.
Yeah, so, hopefully-
I don't think they want me to help on the construction side.
All right, just wanna pay, um, have you pay attention to the written reports, and that are on page thirty-eight, and the monitoring reports that are on thirty-nine through forty-three. Uh, if anybody doesn't have any other questions, can I get a motion to adjourn? Oh, go back into closed session, sorry, thank you.
I make a motion to go into closed session? I'll second.
All right, all in favor say? Oh, is it, okay, how do you vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Change is difficult.
I know, I'm running time, I-